We have some guests in the audience and we're excited to see their presentation. Calling up from St. Bernard's School, both the Sonics and the Swagginators.
I think the Sonics are the representative.
So the Sonics are making the presentation, right? And Michelle Lavoy?
Yes.
Coach, mentor, come on up, Michelle, and whoever else from your team. And the Sonics participated in the first LEGO League Robotics Program. And I'm not going to spoil any of the other news and leave that up to you.
They present over here?
They sure can.
Yes.
There's a handheld microphone on the table and a second one with our town clerk if a microphone is needed. It helps with Enfield Television.
They're going to be switching speakers quite a bit, so everybody speak nice and loud, please. This is the St. Bernard Sonics First LEGO League Team from St. Bernard's School. Their challenge in First LEGO League this year was trash, and they needed to come up with a real-world problem and a solution to it. And I'm going to let them tell you about that tonight. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sarah.
Hannah.
This is Jared.
Shek.
Chelsea.
Anna.
Dan.
Hello, we are the St. Bernard Sonics Team Number 598 from Enfield, Connecticut. Even though our school has been doing FLL for a few years now, our Sonics Team is all rookies.
The trash item that we picked for this year's Trash Truck Challenge is the small, one-pound steel propane tanks that campfires use.
This is what the tanks look like, but today we're using plastic water bottles instead of the propane tanks because that's safer.
It is estimated that nearly 60 million of these tanks are used in the U.S. every year. Because they are so hard to recycle, most of them end up in landfills, taking up about 15 million cubic feet of space. If those tanks could be recycled properly, those tanks would provide enough recycled steel to make about 12,000 cars.
This is a big problem, and we found a solution. Watch our skit to learn more.
Scene one, at a campground.
Come on, Zach, let's go for a walk.
Okay, let's go.
Hey, Zach, do you see that propane tank lying on the ground?
Yes, what should we do with it?
Throw it in fire!
Okay.
No!
Yes!
No!
Too late.
Uh-oh.
Kaboom!
This is not a solution. The problem with this is that propane tanks can explode under extreme heat. They could have taken it home and given it to someone who knows how to properly dispose of it.
Scene two, at an imaginary home and then at a trash-to-energy plant.
What should we do with this propane tank?
What tank?
The one we took on our last camping trip.
Throw it in the garbage.
I thought we weren't supposed to throw propane tanks in the garbage.
Says who?
Our researcher, the Sonics.
Then why don't we just refill it for our next camping trip?
We can't, it's illegal to refill these small tanks.
Does one tank matter? Besides, the town and the fire department only accept the big 20-pound tanks. I can't keep this forever, I'm throwing it away. Oh, no you don't. Too late.
Meanwhile, our trash-to-energy plant.
Who wouldn't know better to put a propane tank in the garbage or recycle bin?
People are too lazy these days.
Very few places recycle, let me know, because it's hard to ensure that the tanks are completely empty and safe to crush for the steel recyclers.
Yeah, we've checked everywhere, people don't know what else to do with them.
If we put it in the compactor, it'll explode! What should we do with it?
Come on, work is over, let's go home.
Okay, well, just leave it.
The problem with putting a propane tank in the trash is that it can get crushed and blow up under extreme pressure.
The compactor is a good example. If you put it in the trash, it could hurt our trash and recycling workers.
Please keep that in mind and never throw these tanks away.
Scene three, at a Sonics FLL meeting.
I hope we can convince our town to buy the propane bottle recycler.
Me too, this machine is amazing. You put, you put, you put the used propane bottle into the machine and it sucks out all the leftover propane, which makes the bottle safe to function and crush. The crushed tank, the crushed tanks are stored in the machine and disposed of. Then the town employees can take the crushed metal to a steel recycling plant and get paid for it.
Forgot the adventures of this machine, Brad Fermi and Lynn Mollson were willing to be our partners in this project. Mr. Fermi gave us all the information we needed to convince our town that a propane bottle recycler was a good investment.
It's a great investment, and no other town has one of these machines. This machine is only being used in a few places right now in the country, like in national parks and Yellowstone.
Did you know this machine can cost between $10,000 and $60,000 depending on the size of the recycler?
Yeah, we thought it might be hard to convince our town to buy one of these machines, to buy, to buy it because of the cost. But then our other expert, Mr. Paul Kelly, from the Public Works Department, suggested applying for a state grant and making it a regional project. Enfield would be able to take propane tanks from towns all over Northern Connecticut, and the money they'll make from the recycled steel would pay off the machine faster than they ever expected.
And when it's paid off, all of the recycled steel will be a profit for the town?
We should help advertise this, let's hang up posters around the town so people know about the propane bottle recycler. If they have an easier way to recycle these bottles, they're more likely to do it.
Yeah, and we can make things a lot safer for our public works employees. We should also tell local campgrounds about this. People will do the right thing when they hear about this. Think about all the propane tanks that will be turned into new steel products instead of sitting in landfills.
It's pretty cool knowing that we made a big, can make a big difference to our environment.
Yeah!
Can you help us make a difference? You each have a summary of our information on propane bottle recyclers and a contact information for Mr. Brad Fermi. We would like to propose that Enfield invests in one of these machines to help everyone in our regional properly recycle small propane tanks. With your help, our FLL project solution could become a reality for Enfield. Do you have any questions for us?
All right. See, it's a force of habit, sorry. First of all, awesome job. So if there's questions from the council, then we would ask you, whoever's going to answer, can use the handheld, just turn it on. But questions, comments from the council? Bill, you were the organizer to bring them to the council this evening. Any comments or questions from you first?
I've actually had the honor of seeing them present this presentation a couple times over the season with, along with the Swagginators, which had a similar type of a solution that they presented for FLL. So it's a great job, guys. I know that we're glad to have this information, and I don't know if DPW or Mr. Kelly has any update on what the town's approach at this point is. I know it's certainly one of the only solutions in all of FLL that is actually being considered in this way so quickly by a community. So, great job for alerting the town that this might be an option for us. So I'll see if Mr. Kelly has anything to add at this point.
Well, first, I'd just like to thank the kids for looking into it, because I didn't have an answer for them. When they asked, I said, "People throw in the garbage, and that's not ideal." So first, thank you very much for doing that. And secondly, the grant application is in. We're waiting on preliminary approval, which should come in about February 1st. And at that time, we're hoping to get into an inter-community agreement, which is, you know, pretty forward-thinking for us. We don't really share with other communities. So this is a great opportunity, and we're hoping that it passes. But it's entirely their endeavor. You did a great job.
Great, thanks, guys. Thank you, Paul.
So now when the Chili Fest comes up in the spring, everyone uses one-pound propane bottles. I was, had the honor of being a cook a year ago, two years ago, and I had like four or five of them generated in that one day, times every cook there, too. So I think Summers could get a phone call there and try to get them on board, and this is a fantastic opportunity for the town of Enfield. Thank you all for the great idea. Paul, I hope we can get the grant, too, which would be awesome. Is it a fully funded grant, or would we have to pay a portion?
It's 80/20, and we've actually got Ellington and Summers on board, so they're ready to go.
Awesome. Great job, thank you. Thanks, Tom. Questions, comments from the council? Ed?
Yeah, just a great job, and I was really unaware of what to do with those, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Carol?
Just ditto, guys, you did an amazing job and great skits, a lot of fun and fantastic idea, so thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Any further comments? Joey?
Keep thinking, who knows what you'll solve next?
Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Well done, and as we work our way through the grant application and the securing of the item, we'll make sure that we keep you apprised.
Thank you so much.
And would love to have you back when it's actually here, up and running, and to see all your hard work, your good work, come to fruition. So thank you very much, congratulations to y'all. All right, next item on our agenda is public communications and petitions. If there's anyone from the audience wishing to address the council, ask that you please raise your hand. And Mrs. Mullen, you're first, come on up. Please state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to no more than five minutes. I do time you, so if you hit the 4:30 mark, I will ask you to politely wrap up. And as always, we ask that you please, and this is never for you, but we ask if you'll please refrain from the use of personalities. Mrs. Mullen, welcome.
Thank you. Maureen Mullen, 1625 King Street. And I remember the first time I heard you make that remark, I thought, "They don't even know me, how can they say that already?" Well, anyway, today I came to thank five people who came to my home. I hope I haven't left anybody out. Ms. Erdman came, Attorney Bronson came, Roger O'Brien, Peter Briantin, Attorney Elston, and did I miss somebody? Okay. They all came down on Friday to look at the site from my home at 1625, looking toward the mound, berm, whatever term we want to use, on the Krec property. This is that my brother always says, "Now, remember to tell the information," because there are always new people who are tuning in for the first time. This mound is 270 feet long, 22 feet high on the street end, 34 feet high at the school end, and it has contaminated soil. I shared that map the day that we were having the little tour down there. And I thank you all for coming and, you know, really responding to what was going on. Now, I had some pictures that I didn't get a chance to give to Attorney Bronson that day, and these are pictures that show the erosion that occurred on the berm mound last spring after we had the melting snow and the water pouring down. So I'd like to pass these pictures on so you have it, because I know according to the agricultural guidelines, you're not supposed to erect a mound like this where there's any chance of erosion. And we still haven't gotten to the map that was supposed to show the depth of the cap. I don't know what the answer to that is, but I did want to point out that I do have the pictures, and if anyone has any other questions or comments, you know, please let me know. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Oh, and I do have one more thing. I have a copy for each of you. I updated the information that I passed on to Krec last spring, early summer, of what I wanted. So I have a copy for each one of you, and it has this month's date on it. I put my initials and today's date on it, so you have that. So I'll pass that along in case there's any question. I don't want any contamination left. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mullen.
You're welcome.
Public communication? Anyone else? Mr. Teacass?
I graduated from the Republic of Enfield. I'm in Thompsonville, somewhere. Last December, the demographer delivered a projection on the school enrollment to the Assistant Superintendent, who ordered it without the board's permission, spending money without, the board has no knowledge to this day, except a couple members, that there is such a document, and hasn't made it public. The other, the other projection was done when they built the high school. Nobody seems to have a copy of it. You do? Okay. What the superintendent's telling you, the people, the amount of people in Krec from Enfield is, I think, is a wild exaggeration of what's there. And this new document, it tells you how many are in Krec, and he's making his budget based on getting all, whatever, 800, 900 students back. Well, they're not there, they don't exist. The last projection, which was done in 2008, said it was going to be 500 more students in the Enfield school system than there is today, and they're not there. Also, in the parochial schools, the projection that was done there, they're not there. So we're way below, and in population, we're not 47,500, I guess that's on the website, we're probably more like 42,000. So that's an exaggeration. So I can understand why you want to have an exaggeration for the, for future investors want to move to Enfield, I can understand that. But we have to have real numbers, and you have to have real numbers to do the budget. The budget's over-exaggerated, but the biggest thing I want to see is the enrollment projections. And that's how you base your budget on. And they, the last time a real budget was presented to the town council was 2008, 2009. After that, it was just a dream sheet or a wish list, whatever you want to call it, well, not a real budget. And it's about time. Once the town manager accepts what the superintendent gives you, that's the official document. So I suggest that the town manager or the future town manager reject the school budget and ask them to give them a real budget in the future. So we have to get some real numbers, and I heard a wild exaggeration on the surplus this year. I don't know if it's true, but if it's that high, then you overgave them last year too much money. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Public communications? Anyone else for public communications? Thank you very much. We will move to counselor communications and petitions. Counselor communications. Donna?
I'll just respond to Bob. Bob, I will get you a copy of that tax season for me. I did find it, I went through my stuff. I did ask, I do believe leadership did ask for that, and I don't know if they've received it yet.
Joey?
Yeah, through the mayor to the town manager. The catch basin on Raffia Road, right across from the northerly side of the library, is plugged, and when it was raining this weekend, it was flooding right out into the road, so we need to get, look at that before this next storm. And another problem that I seen, and I don't know how we fix this problem, but other years we had to go back and push the corners. All the corners going up Raffia Road, when the plows are coming, they're tucking the slush onto the sidewalk, and it actually made the sidewalk down the end almost impassable, you know, till the snow melted. And, you know, we've got to try to figure out, because once you tuck it all into that corner, the people can't shovel it out, and which creates a hazard. So if we could try to figure out how we're going to do that with these corners, and, you know, maybe if we do get a lot of snow this weekend, you know, we may just have to get a loader and open some of these harder spots up, be more proactive. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. Counselor communications? Anyone else? Bill?
I wanted to start with an event info that I got today. I just lost the documents, so I'll come back to that. Why don't we start with a motion to suspend the rules and move the following items to miscellaneous this evening and potentially proceed to a vote? The items on the agenda are A1 and A2, E, F, G, and H.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Lee, seconded by Counselor Hall to move those items to miscellaneous. Any discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? unanimous?
And the first, I apologize, there is Fermi Robotics Program. The Buzz Team, Team 175, is hosting their annual pasta supper to support their team's activities. It's going to be March 3rd, and there will be some flyers floating around, but put it on your calendar, March 3rd. It's typically at St. Bernard's Hall on Hazard Ave, and I believe tickets are $10 and may be purchased at the door or from any team member. And I do have another announcement for another activity that I'll bring up later in the evening.
All right, Bill? Anyone else?
Yeah.
Just a couple comments, and it's to go along the lines of what Counselor Bosco had mentioned. So this weekend, they're projecting our first real snowstorm for the winter. Besides the, from the public works perspective of being ready operationally, if we can fine-tune our communication means as well, because we haven't put out a parking ban yet, we haven't done the countdown clock for sidewalk cleaning, can we just make sure that we're ready? Unfortunately, the, I think the predictions are, not unfortunately, some are six inches, some are saying a heck of a lot more. So if we can be prepared for that. And then really, just two events that are, that are coming up, and you can tell when it's winter, and you don't get out a lot, because the calendar really isn't full between now and our next meeting. But we're all familiar with the First Readers, and they have their annual trivia night, and it's all the way on Saturday, February 27th, at Mount Carmel from 7:00 to 10:00. But it is their one fundraiser. They just had a First Reader ceremony, I believe, last week with 100-plus kids becoming first-time readers and being recognized for it. So please contact First Readers if you would like to participate and see if you're smarter than a fifth grader? Is that, that, they're tough questions. And then personally, we'll plug the 4th of July Town Celebration. We have our annual winter dinner dance on Saturday, March 5th, at the Polish National Home. $25 per person, always a really nice night and a great meal put on by Sasha and his team at Old Country Banquets. So with that, anyone else? Ed?
Yeah, I have a couple issues on roads, but I guess we're having a public works meeting, so I'll bring them up then. And I have one more thing. I had the opportunity to visit the owner and manager of All Face that moved here into Enfield, down in the UL Building. If you get an opportunity to go down and talk to him, he's a very nice gentleman, a little upset with our department, planning department, and how things worked out with him, but he's here with 50 employees. They have a second business that's also solar panels, so the warehouse is full. If you get an opportunity, go down there, welcome him, anybody's welcome. He said no one showed up. I happen to know, because my daughter-in-law works for him, and that's all I wanted to mention.
All Face. Thank you, Ed. Anyone else?
Jack.
Microphone, Ed.
Scavone. Jack Scavone is the name.
And he's at the Old King Street facility?
Old King Street, around the back.
Exit 46.
Yeah, you'll see red awnings out in the.
Okay, in the back of the building.
Back in the building.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Anyone else?
Yeah, I got the other.
Bill?
I did find the other item, I wanted to make sure I got this right. So Fermi Safe Grad Committee has come up with an interesting fundraising opportunity. They are collecting inkjet and laser cartridges to raise funds for this year's celebration. And the way this is working is that if you have empty cartridges, you can give them to any Fermi student, preferably a senior, who can bring them into the, into the school, or they can be dropped off directly at Fermi High School. There's a collection box in the main office, and students, students also have access to other boxes positioned around the school facility. And I think staff can also, any Fermi staff can collect them, and there's a separate staff collection box in the teacher's room. So that's, that's going to continue throughout the winter into the spring, and they thank everyone for any support they can give them.
Great, thanks, Bill. Anyone else? Then we'll move to the town manager report and communications. Lee?
Thank you, Scott. Two items quickly related to materials you have at your places. First of all, you have the annual comprehensive financial report completed by the auditors for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015. Consists of a management letter, the financial statements, the federal single audit report, and the state single audit report. We reviewed these briefly with the General Government Committee last week, and we're in the process of scheduling the auditors to come in and talk with all of you in executive session. We're shooting for the second meeting in February for that. And then secondly, you have materials at your places related to what you accomplished at your first goal-setting session, the dot exercise, your priorities that you'll use for the second goal-setting session next Monday. You also have the summary of the municipal fiscal indicators report that I mentioned. And we just got notice today that the latest five-year municipal fiscal indicators report is up on OPM's website, so we're going to update that showing FY14 information, and we'll hopefully have that for you for next Monday. And we do have a rough draft of a three-year financial forecast for the town. I reviewed this morning with our acting finance director. We wanted to hold off giving that to you until we have our health insurance meeting tomorrow. We also want to review the information with Board of Education staff, since there is a big line item there for education expenses. And then we hope to give you that either by the end of this week or at the meeting on Monday, the goal-setting session on Monday. We'll walk you through that, and hopefully that'll be helpful to you as you're thinking about your priorities, number one. And number two, any parameters you want to consider giving me as I get into the budget preparation process for next fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Any questions for Lee? All right.
Thank you for this document, and I think having the definitions is going to make a world of difference for us.
And Lee, when you mentioned the latest fiscal updates from OPM, does that include the now projected $500 million deficit? Is that the?
No, that's not what I'm referring to. What I'm referring to is the five-year municipal fiscal indicators report.
Okay.
They just added a year of data to it.
Okay.
So we'll update that and give you that either by the end of this week or at the meeting next week.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions for Lee? Thank you, Lee. Next, town attorney report and communication. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As assigned, I am progressing on the review of all pending litigation and all pending cases against the town or that the town has brought. I reported on some in this evening's special meeting, and over the next two in February, I think I can bring you up to date on all of the ones that are outstanding.
Thank you, Chris. Questions for Chris? Thank you. Reports of special committees of the council, Enfield High School Renovation Building Committee, Donna or Gina, any updates?
No, we have our meeting on Thursday, which we probably unfortunately will miss, but I'm going to try to touch base with Randy, see what we need to. I mean, right now, it's really hot and heavy. I mean, the A Wing is literally taken apart. There's just, you know, the base, almost just skeleton left there, but you can start to see it's take shape, and it's really, it's really looking good.
Great, okay. Red?
Yes, Donna, maybe you can tell me, has the phone problem been resolved?
You know, they were working towards it, and I think it was like 90%, but I will ask when I talk to Randy and bring that back to you, Red. ask when I talk to Randy and bring that back to you, Red. Okay.
Any other questions for the Enfield High School Renovation Building Committee? Any other reports of special committees of the council? Carol?
Just a quick comment. We did have the general government's meeting, like we had referenced, and we had made a request of Chris to come back and report to the entire council on all the pending litigation. So that's what you're getting now. You're getting the updates for that. And with the insurance meeting, I will be attending that tomorrow as the liaison because of the huge projected increase of 25%, which is alarming. So our consultant will be there, and I'll update the council once we've had that meeting and an email, and I'm sure Lee will too, but that's about it.
Thank you, Carol.
Most of it was in executive session, so.
Thanks, Carol. Anyone else? Kathleen?
Yeah, I would like to report on some of these boards that I'm a liaison to, but no one ever notified me as to what boards I'm on and when they meet. I gave Red a list of the boards I was interested in being on. I don't know whether or not I'm on them, but certainly can't be a liaison if I don't know when they meet or what boards that I am on. So if somebody could tell me that, would appreciate it. Thank you.
So, so to that, Lee, I know after getting the appointments from Red and from myself, submitted an Excel spreadsheet to the manager's office. I thought that went out to the entire group, but could you have Deb resend that? And then especially for the committees that are, or for the agencies that are outside agencies, a letter from, from the manager's office stating that these are the liaisons for the next two years with the contact information for the counselor. So I know I've been contacted by a couple, but...
How do I know when they meet? That's, I mean...
Correct. And so like Ed and I, I'm new to the Housing Authority. And so they, Ed's been a member, but they reached out to me in an email, actually to both of us, saying, this is when we meet, here's our contact information. It was a refresher for Ed. He goes to all the meetings anyways, but it was new information for me. Some of them you probably will never hear from, because they don't regular, they don't have regular meetings.
Okay.
But at least if we make the good faith effort to say, because any agency that receives, I think, over $5,000 from the town is required to have a council liaison. So...
And I would like to go, but I just don't know when.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Anyone else? All right, next item would be old business appointments, Town Council appointed. It's items one through 23. We've got two of them starred. Is there a motion to remove from the table item seven, Clean Energy Committee?
So moved.
By Counselor Edgar. Seconded by Counselor Denny. By a show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Item's been removed from the table. Can I have a nomination, please?
Sure. I'd like to nominate Jamie Cisneros.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Arnone, seconded by Counselor Sacala for Jaime, Jamie?
Yeah, I know I was going to get got on that one today, and just for the sake of how it's written here today.
I wanted to hear everyone say Jaime.
And no, you did, you did what I would not. You're welcome.
All right. So motion and second. Is there a motion to close nominations? By Counselor Suzak, seconded by Counselor Edgar. By a show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Nominations are closed. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Edgar?
Four.
Counselor Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Jaime Cisneros.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Jaime Cisneros.
Counselor Sarno?
Four.
Counselor Stokes?
Four.
Counselor Suzak?
Jaime Cisneros.
Counselor Arnone?
Jaime Cisneros.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sacala?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
And item 10, Inland Wetland and Water Course Agency. Is there a motion to remove this item from the table? By Counselor Edgar. Seconded. By Counselor Arnone. By a show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Item's been removed from the table. Is there a nomination?
Yes, Carol, Ann Hall.
Carrie Ann Howe.
Motion by Counselor Edgar, seconded by Counselor Sacala. Is there a motion to close nominations? By Counselor Hall, seconded by Counselor Suzak. By a show of hands, all those in favor of closing nominations? Those opposed? Nominations are closed. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Edgar?
Four.
Counselor Hall?
Carrie Ann Howe.
Mayor Copan?
Carrie Ann Howe.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Carrie Ann Howe.
Counselor Sarno?
Four.
Counselor Stokes?
Carrie Ann Howe.
Counselor Suzak?
Carrie Ann Howe.
Counselor Arnone?
Carrie Ann Howe.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sacala?
Carrie Ann Howe.
Counselor Denny?
Carrie Ann Howe.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Any other appointments by the council? Next item, appointments by the Town Manager. Any appointments, Lee?
None.
And then items C, D, E, F, G, H, and I all remain on the table. We move to new business. There is no consent agenda. Under appointments, Town Council appointed. We have two that are starred. Item number two, Library Board of Trustees. May I have a nomination?
I would like to nominate Marion Maruca.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Lee, seconded by Counselor Hall.
Motion to close nomination?
Motion to close by Deputy Mayor Lee, seconded by Counselor Suzak. By a show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Nominations are closed. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Edgar?
Four.
Counselor Hall?
Marion Maruca.
Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor Copan?
Marion Maruca.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Marion Maruca.
Counselor Sarno?
Four.
Counselor Stokes?
Marion Maruca.
Counselor Suzak?
Marion Maruca.
Counselor Arnone?
Marion Maruca.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sacala?
Marion Maruca.
Counselor Denny?
Mary Ann Maruca.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
And item number three, Library Board of Trustees.
So moved.
Is there a nomination?
Sandra Nucio.
By Counselor Edgar, seconded by Counselor Denny. For Sandra Nucio. So motion to close nominations? By Deputy Mayor Lee, seconded by Counselor Suzak. By a show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Nominations are closed. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Edgar?
Four.
Counselor Hall?
Sandy Nucio.
Mayor Copan?
Sandra Nucio.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Sandra Nucio.
Counselor Sarno?
Four.
Counselor Stokes?
Sandra Nucio.
Counselor Suzak?
Sandra Nucio.
Counselor Arnone?
Sandra Nucio.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sacala?
Sandra Nucio.
Counselor Denny?
Sandra Nucio.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Any other appointments by the Town Council? Next item would be item E, Capital Region Council of Governments Regional Planning Commission Alternate. We have received from the Planning and Zoning Commission their choices to serve on the CROG Regional Planning Commission. So I first need a motion to appoint Peter Falk as the alternate? So moved. By Deputy Mayor Lee, seconded by Counselor Suzak. Any discussion? I don't, do I have to close nominations? I don't have to close. It's not, it's not even ours. Okay. So, any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Edgar?
Four.
Counselor Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Peter Falk.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
Counselor Sarno?
Four.
Counselor Stokes?
Peter Falk.
Counselor Suzak?
Peter Falk.
Counselor Arnone?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sacala?
Peter Falk.
Counselor Denny?
Peter Falk.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
And then item F, the reappointment to the Capital Region Council of Governments Regional Planning Commission. Full-time member, Alan Dreinen.
So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Edgar, seconded by Counselor Stokes. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Edgar?
Four.
Counselor Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
Counselor Sarno?
Abstain.
Counselor Stokes?
Alan Dreinen.
Counselor Suzak?
Alan Dreinen.
Counselor Arnone?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sacala?
Alan Dreinen.
Counselor Denny?
Alan Dreiden.
There's 10 in favor, none against, one abstention.
Next on our agenda is items for discussion, and all items have been moved to miscellaneous that we would act upon this evening. The one item that did not, I'm sorry, the two items that did not move are the appointments, Town Council Appointed Ethics Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission Alternate. All other items have moved to miscellaneous, so we'll move to miscellaneous. The first item under miscellaneous is the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? By Deputy Mayor Lee?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Hall. Discussion? By a show of hands, all those in favor of the consent agenda? Those opposed? One in opposition. Consent agenda is approved. Next item is discussion resolution, request for transfer of funds for Family Resource Center, Resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made to Family Resource Center Hartford Foundation Grant, FRC, LEGO Grant. Salaries, $14,051, FICA, $862, Medicare, $202. Other professional services, $5,000. Printing and reproduction, $1,000. Instructional supplies, $6,825. Food, food-related, $2,000. Furniture and fixtures, $8,060. Technology equipment, $2,000. LEGO Grant, FRC, parent activities, $2,000. Instructional supplies, $20,000. Other professional services, $23,000. From Family Resource Center revenue, Hartford Foundation, FRC grant, $40,000. LEGO grant, $45,000. Certified, the funds are available, John Wilcox, Acting Director of Finance.
So moved.
By Counselor Arnone?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Denny. Discussion?
Just want to acknowledge the generosity of both of those organizations in supporting the FRC program for another year.
Any other?
That's big dollars.
Big dollars. Big commitment. Any other discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Edgar?
Four.
Counselor Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
Counselor Sarno?
Four.
Counselor Stokes?
Four.
Counselor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Arnone?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sacala?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, discussion resolution, request for transfer of funds for Development Services, Resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made to Development Services, Planning, Other Professional Services, $34,555 from Development Services Code Enforcement. Part-time salaries, $20,000 administration. Full-time salaries, $9,555 and administration, other supplies, $5,000. Certified, the funds are available, John Wilcox, Acting Director of Finance.
So moved.
By Counselor Hall?
Seconded.
By Deputy Mayor Lee. Discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Edgar?
Four.
Counselor Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
Counselor Sarno?
Four.
Counselor Stokes?
Four.
Counselor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Arnone?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sacala?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, discussion resolution, resolution setting a public hearing regarding the proposed changes to the Enfield Town Code, Chapter 22, Article 2, the Cultural Arts Commission. Whereas, Chapter 22, Article 2 of the Town Code established a Cultural Arts Commission, and whereas on October 20th, 2014, the Town Council amended the ordinance to update and redefine the Cultural Arts Commission's purpose and responsibilities, but overlooked the name change to the quote "Enfield Culture and Arts Commission" unquote, which more appropriately reflects the commission's expanded mission within the community. And whereas the commission seeks to implement the name change ahead of marketing and branding campaign with additional amendments to Chapter 22, Article 2. And whereas the Town Council wishes to seek input from the residents of the town of Enfield regarding the proposed amendment, now therefore be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Tuesday, February 16th, 2016, at 6:50 PM to allow interested residents an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the proposed amendment to the name of the Cultural Arts Commission.
So moved.
By Counselor Arnone, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lee. Discussion? Tom?
Yes, a bit of housekeeping. Bill and I both serve on this committee, and we did do some extensive changes to their charter, and we just kind of discussed it with the committee in separating cultural arts into culture and arts. Just gives a better wide spectrum to what we do and defines the group much better. So just a little bit of housekeeping. I think it'll help us with getting our logos together, getting our word out to the community, who we are and what we do.
Great. Thanks, Tom. Anyone else? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Edgar?
Four.
Counselor Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee? Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
Counselor Sarno?
Four.
Counselor Stokes?
Four.
Counselor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Arnone?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sacala?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, discussion resolution, resolution authorizing the Town Manager to enter into an agreement with the Office of Policy and Management Intertown Capital Equipment Purchasing Incentive Program. Resolved that Lee C. Erdman, Acting Town Manager, is authorized to enter into and amend contractual instruments with the Office of Policy and Management Intertown Capital Equipment Purchasing Incentive Program in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield for equipment purchases.
So moved.
By Deputy Mayor Lee?
Second.